Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the work session for March 21st. This is the second of our work sessions to discuss land use planning. Our first meeting was held about a month ago, and out of that meeting, we put together a list of things to ask staff to look into. There were potential changes to the comprehensive plan, some transfer development information, purchase of development information, new preservation zoning district information, cost of services for development, and a draft build-out analysis. And Mr. Cooley, would you like to come back to us and talk about some of these issues?
Yes, sir. Be happy to. You kind of stole my thunder. That was the way I was going to start, too, with a nice list of things that we were doing, so I will go past that. The first item that we had on the agenda was, or at least what we came up with, staff came up with, was a cost of services estimate for the average single-family dwelling. What staff was able to do was find the older American Farmland Trust cost of services study that was done in 2003. What that stuff -- if I can get you to open.
Where are you?
Oh.
You're not on the first one?
Oh, did I go too far down? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I thought we were starting at 3.01. Or not?
I went off.
I think you're on A.
I'm sorry, I went off my list, and I apologize about that.
A is E.
A is E. Of course, I went to the last one. What we had, what we put in the agenda was the Code of Virginia Article 7.1 Transfer Development.
Mr. Cooley, why don't you start with A, the way we have the agenda?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Start there with the potential changes to the comprehensive plan.
What staff looked at really in the comprehensive plan was the goals, and the overarching vision for the comprehensive plan kind of lays this out very well. The land use and development vision for the comprehensive plan is preserve the predominantly agriculture and rural nature of Culpeper County while providing opportunities for growth in identified areas at the appropriate scale. First goal is to maintain a balanced growth approach that shifts development pressure away from the outlined agricultural and rural areas and directed to the urban service boundary and the identified future growth areas as identified on page 226 through 242 in the comprehensive plan. That's really what we are kind of focusing on right now. I mean, that vision, that first goal, and then the growth areas. If you look at the growth areas on page 226. No, go ahead.
Is it 237?
That's the urban services boundary. I actually wanted -- wow, this is 231. I apologize. Keep it there. This is what the county back in 2023 had identified as the growth areas within the town. These are all areas that, I mean, the majority of them are adjacent to town as well as the Clevenger's property up in the northern end of the county at the intersection of 229 and 221. These are some areas that staff, you know, not going to make any recommendations today, but definitely wants to investigate further options for either enhancing the growth potential within these areas. Would like to talk with the board on their vision for growth areas in the town. I mean, you know, we have ideas, but it needs, our direction needs to come from you, obviously. But, you know, we have four growth areas identified. You know, I guess the big question is, would the board like to maintain these four and look at how to enhance them? Would the board like to increase their size or decrease their size? Or would the board even like to reduce the number of growth areas within the county? Those, I mean, those are the high-level questions that staff has for the board. I don't, I'm not throwing it back at you, I'm just saying this is what we're thinking.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Underwood.
Relative to that, to me, I guess what would matter is what is zoned and what is unzoned. So if it's identified in a growth area and is zoned R4, I'm not like next to Friendship Heights or Spark or whatever, I'm not, I think we need to recognize that unless we're planning on changing the R4. And then if it's not zoned, meaning it's zoned RA or A1, then are we saying we're planning on rezoning RA and A1? I think those would be a way to separate and have a conversation about it.
And Mr. Chairman, inside the, beyond these yellowed areas on the map are individual area maps that kind of get into the nitty-gritty as far as what zoning we have for those areas. And you can pick up on those areas. For example, the southern area is largely already zoned. I'm not sure that anything inside that future growth area we show as either RA or rural area, or rural area or A1 that could be further zoned. But there are two areas, the area that's to the northwest of town and then the area that's east of town, there are some unzoned parcels or not zoned for residential development or commercial development right now. So those would be the two hotspots to look at. And then the northern one there that you see on the screen, we already have the PUD there, and then R1 zoning there as well. So Supervisor Underwood's point there, if you're going to look at those areas, we need to look at the areas that are east of town and then northwest of town specifically.
Mr. Chairman. We also, I think, have to identify the fact of what our capacity is throughout time to accept growth in these areas, whether it's commercial, residential, or industrial, more along the lines of the level of service. Because I think a lot of people take into consideration the fact that this is designated as a growth area, therefore it can be it now. And we don't have the level of service available to accommodate R3, R4, or different things within, even within our growth areas today. So I think almost determining kind of a time-based thing to give us a map of how we can get there to achieve these growth areas with still being able to provide an appropriate level of service for these areas as they get built out.
That goes back to the zoned and unzoned, because what we can do if it's zoned is different than what we can do if it's unzoned.
But where it's unzoned, I completely agree with what you're saying.
Other comments? Okay. So is there a way we can, is there a map that will show us the unzoned portions of the Catawba and the Bragg's Corner business area?
And I'm a little confused right now, because I believe every parcel of land in the county has some type of zoning, whether it's A1, R1, or whatever. And I apologize.
And I'm guessing they're A1 or RA?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
233. Sorry. So on 233, the areas that are currently zoned rural area that are not for, you know, industrial or commercial or slated for residential development, in this particular area plan or the area there in pink that you see. And while they carry a designation here, this is a future land use plan, this is not a zoning map, but you can see zoning and other uses that correlate well with what the other future areas show as far as industrial there to the east on Dalrove property, for example, Canavan property. But you have the Armstrong Farm and then some parcels to the west of that that are currently zoned rural areas, rural area, excuse me, and then to the north of 1529 Business there along Bradford Road, you have parcels that are currently shown as future growth areas that are identified here in the future land use plan as mixed use. And those have been in the plans, and this is planned, just a reminder, is 2023. So not too long ago, we looked at those areas as potential growth areas. And the board is well aware that we've, zoning office was reviewing an application for the Armstrong property. I think that's been withdrawn currently, so that's not an active rezoning at the moment. But that did come in. And when you look specifically at the mixed-use verbiage in the comp plan, which is prior to this, there are, there is a suggestion of zoning categories for mixed use. So that's another thing that the board could consider if you're looking to make any amendments as to the verbiage in the comp plan. You may want to change the density by changing the zoning types that could be allowed in that future growth area. So that's just another suggestion.
Mr. Underwood?
Well, one, I'm very much interested in Supervisor Gugino's opinion here, because she represents this area. And two, when, upon my first reading, I envisioned perhaps, I don't know, maybe I didn't read it as thoroughly as I should, but I thought I did, I was expecting mixed use to be something similar to what we see along Ira Hoffman, where you would have like clustered R1 or R2 and some retail. And to me, just because that's what I see, that's what I kind of expected. If we're talking R3 and R4, as one member of the board, in the very, in the near term or even intermediate term, my constituents don't want me to support rezonings for that. And I wish to respect my constituents' wishes in that direction.
Mr. Chairman, something might want to, this doesn't affect, doesn't have a, the county doesn't have to say, that's the town right now looking at, and neighborhood mixed use over a lot of commercial problems in town, which would increase the density of the town. So I think that's something, as we look at making changes, we need to keep that in the back of our mind, what's going on with the town. Now, whether they're going to proceed forward with this, what's being proposed, I don't know. But, you know, when we look at changing the comprehensive plan, we're talking more around the urban, the services area. You know, the saying goes, you can't stop growth, but you can direct it. And that's where we want to see it directed. And I think we need to get on the conversation of, you know, the vast amount of A1 land, large parcels, that that's been the driver of this whole discussion from day one, is what do we do to preserve the open and rural characteristics of the county?
As long as we're not reducing density, let's go there.
It would seem to me that looking at the areas that are targeted for growth or potential development may fit into a plan that we would have for how we would manage A1 and RA land. Does that make sense? Say that again. It would seem to me, as we look at the entire picture of the county, if we could designate some areas where we believe growth should take place, or we would want to accommodate that growth, that would be a good move, to know what that is, define how it would develop there, as we start to look at managing the growth and looking at the growth in A1 and RA.
I think to an extent, we've already done that on our comp plan. Inside of Ira Hoffman, the outer loop, all of that inside of there was, you know, slated for higher-density growth. And we didn't want to see it go on the outside of the outer loop.
So I think what staff is coming to us and looking for direction on, we're showing the areas in a different map is up now, but we're showing the four areas of potential growth that have been designated there as such. One, do we agree that that should be as it is? And two, is there further refinement of the zoning or the planning in that area, in those areas?
Ms. Gugino.
Yes. I agree that we need to keep our growth within our services, water and sewer. We don't need high-density developments or anything like that in areas where we're going to have 20 septics on 30 acres. It just, to me, that just sounds gross. But as far as the definitions that we currently have, I think we do need to kind of go down that next level and identify what types of, what mixed use really means to us, because I agree, mixed use to me is more of a mix of residential, retail. It's not an R3 cluster development. That, to me, is not mixed use. That's one use, that's residential. So I would like to see another kind of level of detail, looking at our level of service that is being provided today, what kind of capacity is available in those areas. I mean, taking the Armstrong property as an example, I mean, Knolls Mill is not a high-level-of-service road. Neither are the intersections with Business 29 nor the Rogers Road extension to 666. So to me, that would mean that at this point in time, we would look more at low travel time, or trip numbers for those areas until we put in our transportation plan and work on getting those roads up to where they could accommodate a higher density of activity and more trips per day. So I think that's one of the things we really need to look at for these growth areas, is what their capacity is, because nobody wants to sit at their driveway waiting to get out on Knolls Mill Road or any other road for 45 minutes because of the amount of traffic going by, because we indicated that as not needing additional lanes or turn lanes or anything like that. So I think we need to do that due diligence and identify those levels of service and that timeline to accommodate.
Mr. Bates.
Mr. Chairman, I agree 100% with Ms. Gugino, and I think that should be a determining factor, not just in the service area, but throughout the county, when we look at the ability of infrastructure to handle the increased density in houses. And, you know, again, this has been a problem with the minor divisions, that the number of houses increase, and we don't have the roads to support it. So I would like to see if staff could come up with some ideas on how that could be a trigger point, that that's, is there something that the state would allow us to do to say, okay, these roads can't support this amount of traffic, and until we get the roads fixed, we're not going to increase the density in these areas.
I can reach out to you on that. I know that there are times when impact, when I talk to you guys, and they say they move okay, as they are. Unfortunately, I think they, I don't think we have programs in place to allow us.
Allow us to request a higher level of investigation of capacity of the road. We are taking the developers' studies at face value, and, you know, they're going out and using supposed experts in the field to come up with these huge documents that we're expected to digest and come up with some type of answer or, you know, review of. Staff has been talking recently about, perhaps in some of the, I don't know what the trigger is, but in some of these larger rezoning cases, that the, we work with the developer to fund a third-party review, review by, you know, someone that both the developer and county staff can agree with, so that we can get more of a independent opinion about the numbers, as opposed to just relying on the developer. Not saying they're doing anything wrong, but being able to ask someone questions and, you know, knowing that they're working for us as opposed to someone applying for rezoning.
It would seem to me, asking a developer to tell us what the road system would be like is kind of like having the fox watch the hen house. Is there a, as we look at these areas, is there a way we could require a traffic impact study that would be independently done and paid for by the developer?
Through a rezoning process, yes, we could. Mr. Chairman, if I could go back onto what Supervisor Bates was talking about.
Please.
On the A1, RA, you know, what we call our minor divisions or, you know, term maybe by right divisions, I don't know of a tool for roads specifically that we, that the board would have to your availability, other than zoning, changing the zoning. I don't know that years ago in the 1980s, Culpeper County had an adequate public infrastructure ordinance that was four roads that was struck down as illegal by the General Assembly. Supervisor Rosenberg may remember that. And I don't think that anything exists readily just specific to roads, other than traffic impact fees, which the county looked at to help counterbalance the cost of infrastructure improvements, which we don't have today. So there are certain tools, but they're very minimal, unfortunately, when you're looking at the road infrastructure as a whole. But when it comes to rezonings, it's a little bit different. We do have a little more leverage through that rezoning process, so.
Mr. McLaren, as an addition to that, current state code says that to, for locality to newly implement impact fees, they must have a 15% population growth between the last decennial census and the next-to-last decennial census. Right now, so between 2010 and 2020, the county had a growth rate of about 12.8%. So at this, at this time, we don't qualify for being able to implement a new impact fee ordinance.
I think that may depend on how you count that growth.
12.6%. Specifically, we need 15.
I understand. The question might be in how you got to the 12.6%.
Hey, if you're asking whether I like us having too little growth, that's a different question. I may prefer that we be 12.6 or lower.
Chairman, if I could make one suggestion to the board, if it's, you know, there are, you know, the comp plan is always a general guide, right? So the language in there is general on purpose. You know, you can make stronger ties between, you know, this is just, we're looking at one chapter of the comprehensive plan, right? There's several chapters. There's a chapter on transportation that talks to, you know, Knolls Mill needing some help, Bragg's Corner intersection, they're needing some help in the future. We could tie those into these maps that you see, makes a more complicated map for GIS to potentially put together. But, you know, you can pare it down a little bit so that you're looking at those high-level, big infrastructure improvements like roads and intersections, you know, and add them to the map. And I think that that would help Supervisor Gugino, what you were, you're kind of after as far as future development goes, so.
And I think going back to like the mixed use, what was kind of a catch-all, I think we do need to better define that to be what we expect it to look like, rather than a true residential mix.
Yeah. There's a very simple description of what mixed use is today, and maybe we look at the verbiage in that section specifically. It just calls out potential zoning districts, you know, and uses those as the base today. But you can definitely be a little more intentional, because there are not a lot of future growth areas identified in the comp plan. And there actually was a pare-down of prior comp plans by quite a bit. So, you know, and that's been at the board's direction, but we can get a little more specific with the language, too, so.
Mr. McLaren, we could also, I mean, if you, if you truly want to reach out and promote a certain look and feel, forms-based codes are an option for that. And that's just, that's a way that you can talk about buildings you want, how you want them to look.
Oh, isn't that what the town's doing there?
That's, that's, that's Architectural Review, that's Architectural Review Board. I'm not getting into that. This is just a way to talk about, we're looking for two-story, we're looking, you know, and it really does get into that, but I will back away now.
Thank you. I think we're in jam. We look at, we're talking about around the urban, the services area. I mean, anytime that comes before the board, that is more than likely, if it's a high-density development, it's going to require rezoning, or it's going to have, we're going to have a seat at the table, for lack of a better term. What we're dealing with outside on these minor divisions, which the cumulative amount of houses has just as heavy an impact, and we don't have a seat at the table. And when it comes to the roads, when it comes, you know, the services needed, and they're adding up little by little, here lately, it's been more than that, but.
Switch into that conversation soon would be great, but for here, where we have a seat at the table, we also need to say what we're looking for to have a seat for. And so, right now, I think what Supervisor Gugino is saying, which if so, is what I agree with, is perhaps the applications that we're receiving or have received are not consistent with what we envision relative to those areas, and is that something that needs to be refined? Minor conversation, but that is, if we're looking at overall growth, that is one of the two questions.
Mr. Bates, I agree. We need to be talking about what's happening in A1 and in RA and in those areas. But I think if we can define how we want these areas to look and develop, that takes us to that next step. And we're going to get there here shortly. Any other points we need to bring up here? Mr. Cooley?
Yes, sir.
Are you comfortable with what Ms. Gugino is asking for in looking at some definitions and defining some things in these growth areas?
I will tentatively say yes. I will be happy to work with a board member to do that.
Is that something that we could discuss in the Rules Committee? To refine the direction and help move forward? Would that be helpful? And is that the right place?
I'm not sure if we want to, we can go to the Rules Committee?
Just to help get the definition of what he's looking for.
Maybe, although another place this may fit may be the Planning Commission, because they've just reviewed these applications and turned one down and sent it away because they had challenges. Maybe they could look at this for us.
Mr. Chairman, I would tend to agree with Supervisor Underwood on that point, just because it's not a rule or an ordinance that we're looking at, we're looking at the comprehensive plan, and that we usually should start, you know, at least with the planning commission on those changes there, so.
I'm comfortable referring this to the Planning Commission, but I think when we do that, we need to specifically give them a charge of what we are looking for, so that we get, I don't want to say get the answer that we're looking for, that's not my, we want to have the response that covers the area we need answered.
Perhaps Supervisor Gugino could refine this more for what we're sending to the Planning Commission?
So Supervisor, yeah, Supervisor Gugino. I do know your name. It's the supervisor part that I'm struggling with. Could you work with Mr. Cooley and put together what this would look like, and then we refer to the Planning Commission?
Absolutely.
Great. Mr. Chairman, I've just been pointed out a slight mistake I just made. It is true that 12.7% is right, unless you have a population of more than 20,000, then it's 5% growth rate. So right now--
So we would qualify for--
We would qualify, yes, sir.
Okay.
Per current state code.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we can look into that again, but that was a challenging topic. And the, and I just, you know, if the board wants us to move in that direction, staff's going to need firm board consensus on that, because that's a lot of work to reinvent that, so.
Chair, I have a question on that. Do we have any other localities that have implemented it and understand their success rate or how it has?
Supervisor Gugino, I don't think there's a great deal of success rate with that legislation, unfortunately, so. But we're happy to look into it again and bring it back if the board has a future work session, you know, to, because we have not looked into that recently, to my knowledge. Mr. Cooley was actually here the last time we actually brought that around and got that going, so it's been a little while.
May explain us stay in orange, so. How about A1 and RA?
I think that may be something you could look at in Rules Committee if you wanted to do that. Okay, so let's move on to topic B. Okay, so let's move on to Topic B, which on my agenda says transfer of development rights, TDR information.
Yes, sir. There are a couple, I think one of the questions was, you know, what counties are using it? Frederick County and Arlington County.
Frederick County and Arlington County are two counties that use it. There are some other counties that are looking at it. There was not a whole lot of information out there about their success with these. We have collected other information, excuse me, of 2010, you know, in your agenda, the 2010 model, TDR ordinance, as well as the 2013 Frederick County TDR ordinance. But there's not a lot of information that we can find in the public, that I could find in the public realm concerning these programs, specifically to a, to a locality that is, has implemented them.
Mr. Cooley, would you be in a position, do you have enough information you could lay out for the board what a potential TDR program would look like?
Mm-hmm.
If it were implemented here?
Yes, sir. Basically, what we would look, be looking at is each parcel, we would probably have to go through and look at each parcel and determine how many development rights they have. If you have, you know, 50-acre A1 parcel out in the county somewhere, and I'm just going to say, for, for, for this conversation, let's just say a development right is 10 acres. So if you have 100 acres, you have 10 development rights. Now, you've got to keep one, because your house is on that property. So you have nine to sell. Some localities will actually go out and do an appraisal for each one of these programs. Other localities set a price. I've seen them 25,000 and also 35,000. They just say this, this is what we're saying a development right is worth. The development rights that, I think it might be Frederick County actually says all of our agricultural land is a sending area, and they make the, the, the town and around, and around the town, the receiving area. People can go out, and it, and they make it, they, they do say that they make it up to the developer, whoever wants to purchase the rights. They're in negotiation with the homeowner, with the property owner. The, the town or the county does not get involved. Lot of legal work involved in this, because you are severing a right to that property. So, I mean, deeds, deed restrictions, sales, all of that have to be taken into account. But once you go through that process and you do purchase, let's say you go out and buy five development rights, you can then bring them back, back to the receiving area, and if you have a property right now that has 10 development rights, and you want to put these 15 in there, it's a receiving area, and their rules set up, I mean, you, obviously you can't bring back every development right in the county and just build up, but, you know, you can bring back an additional 10% or 15% of the number of rights you have at the time. You can include that in your development, and then you can, once you register those new development rights with the county, you then have 15 development rights on that parcel that originally had, you know, 10, that you want to build on. That is, that is the very simple way of doing it in a couple minutes, when it's, it is a very complicated process. If we were going to do something like that, I kind of like the idea of setting a price, but on the other hand, you know, free market sometimes does a better job than, you know, bureaucrats sitting behind a desk, so it's, it's kind of a toss-up on that one. We'd have to do some more research to see which would be better for the county.
Mr. Bates?
Mr. Chairman, are we talking, now, what Mr. Cooley just described, is that purchase of development rights, or is that transfer of development rights?
Well, it's, it's kind of both, because you, purchase of development rights actually extinguishes the right.
Okay.
That's, that's what I've read about it.
And one goes into a bank that she can draw off of.
Yes.
Purchase of development rights, there is no bank, there is no more development, that's the end of it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Don't go anywhere else.
My understanding is, we would say there is a sending area, and, and for our purposes, let's say A1. So A1 would not have housing, houses built in A1, but you would have development rights that could be sold to areas that we would zone for development. Is that correct?
I'm not saying houses couldn't be built in the A1, because we're not prohibiting people from attempting a rezoning. If somebody wanted to rezone and they wanted to come in and provide the services that, that parcel, you know, needed and went through the whole process, obviously, it's a board, that would be a board decision at the end of the day. But, so I, I think it is more making the A1 the sending area. So the A1 would be the only property type that could sell their development rights. That means the RA couldn't, that means, you know, no, no other zoning district could sell their development rights.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Underwood?
I was just going to say, if we're going to go that route, which in theory I'd support, I'd maybe include RA, because in some areas, I can't tell why it's, but yeah, go ahead, that's my.
I have a couple of questions. So as far as the actual transaction between the sender and the receiver, is there, do we just blanketly designate a receiving area and they're just automatically accepted? Or is it a case-by-case basis that would come through the board to ensure that that area can accommodate that additional growth?
From what I've seen, it is, it's an identified growth area, meaning it's either this one parcel, this area, however you want to define what the receiving area is. But if you do that, you, you, you also need to understand that you're going to have X thousand of TDRs that, you know, you can't shovel on a 40-acre parcel.
Right.
So whatever we think about in terms of TDRs, we're going to have to make room available somewhere, or potentially make room available. So, you know, going up.
Right.
And that's, I think, I think, like I said, Frederick County, I think, made all of their agricultural, I know they have an active program, but maybe not as much development as what we are going through right, right now. But you do need to try to at least balance out, if you have 5,000 out here, you've got to have room for 5,000 in here.
So if an A1 parcel does sell their development rights for a transfer, would they be eligible for a rezoning for a higher density, since they have basically sold their rights to develop?
No, they, they, they are, I don't want to be so, you know.
Or is that something that we can determine in the ordinance?
I think it's part of the program. I mean, the idea is with a TDR, is you are providing a landowner, hopefully in this case, a farmer, a method for him to gain some of, some additional value for, you know, new barns, new chicken houses, new tractors, whatever, and still have his whole farm to You know, it's, it's really not for some, for.
Right, but at that point, so, in the case that happens all the time, farmer quits farming, kids sell the property, at that point, can then somebody come in and say, I want to put an R3 cluster development on this piece?
It's still A1.
Right, but can they come for a rezoning, even though the development rights had been sold off of that?
Oh, no, they are, they, they, anybody can try, but there are going to be documents in the chain of title that show that these nine development rights were sold off and that the land is restricted to the one development right where the house is.
Okay.
So the property has no development rights to, to sell anymore.
Okay.
Or to allow for construction.
Okay. Or allowed to a rezoning.
Things have happened in the past, but that is, if it works, if it works the way it's supposed to, all the paperwork is there that shows that you can't do that on this property.
Yeah, and I could see, like you say, that you can't just put all the development rights on one parcel, so I think we would limit our receiving areas to like an R1, R2. I don't know that we would want to put any more receiving into our already highest density of R4 or anything like that, so I think those are things that we need to think about if we go forward.
Supervisor Lee, you had a?
Yes, sir. Just to clarify, Mr. Cooley, so in Frederick County, are you saying that, that it's, that all of their A1 zoned land is under the transfer of development rights?
That's what I've.
Program?
That's what I've read.
It's not, it's not an optional right?
Oh, well, I mean, it's, it's, they don't have to, they don't have to sell. If they have, they have the right to sell if they want to.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, so it's not mandatory if you're a?
No, sir.
A landowner that you have to participate?
I can't come demand your rights, sir.
I can give you a big enough.
But all of their agriculturally zoned land is available for, for that purpose, if you want to participate?
If, if, if the A1 land, if all the A1 land is within, is within the sending area, then yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, that's, that is a lot of rights, and it is something that we should probably, you know, or do we have some areas that we want to target to, to protect more than others? That's, you know, those are questions that are going to be asked, hopefully, as we move through, if we do a TDR, that, that would be a discussion to have, too.
All right, and then what, what kind of a process does a landowner have to go through in order to participate in this?
Two different ways, I believe. Some localities say TDR is worth $35,000. That's it. We're just going to set, we're going to set that. So when a developer or someone comes to you, it's your 100 acres, and I want to buy none of them, I'm going to give you, you know, nine times $35,000, and there we go. And we do the paperwork.
Right.
All the legal stuff, get the attorneys involved, do all that. I then walk away with the nine development rights, which I can take to the receiving area. Or another way is a locality puts the code into place, backs out, and it becomes a purely private.
Right.
Function.
Negotiation.
Just like, just like we're selling a house.
Okay. All right, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Underwood, without a lot of thought, this could be prone for abuse, and what I mean by that is you could see 35,000 rights on blackjack roads sell like crazy, and you could see nobody selling $35,000 rights on good farmland looking at the mountains. Just to, as an example. So, but if you did take soils maps, if you, if the county did one heck of a lot of work, or even just in theory, when I thought about this about 15 years ago, if you could divide the county with 15 and 229 and have two sending areas, so you have a sending area that's west and a sending area that's east, that largely lines up, with the exception of Richardsville, with the county soil map down in the planning office. And if you, therefore, you could set prices that would be, there's always going to be room for abuse, but you would do a big division that would limit the room for abuse if you did it that way.
Question, Mr. Cooley?
Yes, sir.
So one of my concerns, we have density rates set in all of our zoning areas, and I don't think it would be a good idea to add the number of potential houses in A1 to our growth areas, but would it require rezoning where we would say in R3, you still have the same number of houses, but you need to buy for each house, you will need to buy a development right?
We could, we could set it up, we could set a program up that if you come in for a rezoning in, in an R3, you know, going, who cares? Whatever zoning it's, it could be part of the rezoning that they could request, or we could say, hey, you know, if you do this, you're eligible for X number of development rights if you go out and purchase them. I mean, there, I think there are ways, I think I'm talking about what you're talking, I think there are ways to address what you're asking.
I, I'm looking for a way that we do not increase the density in those areas. We add a requirement that they purchase a development right to go with.
Sure. I, I don't.
Is that a zoning change, or is that?
That is, probably, but it's also going to be an attorney change, because I'm going to need to talk with her to make sure that, our attorney, to make sure that what we're proposing somehow can meet state code. I mean, I, I like the idea to bring the, to bring the density down to 75% and go, if you want to build 75% of that zoning district, go for it. Now, if you want to, you can buy the other 25% in these areas.
Other, other comments or questions?
This is a matter of historical significance. The county asked the General Assembly many, many years ago, and at that time Paige Hickinbotham was in the House of Representatives, representing us, to look at transferable development rights, and Paige was the vote that turned it down. It lost by one vote, and his reasoning was that he was afraid that people would be taken advantage of when somebody was trying to purchase those development rights. But since then, it's become available. But in the discussion that Mr. Cooley just had there relative to taking 75% to 100%, if you're looking at the possibility of doing this, and I think it makes sense if, if the board desires to go that way, but if you allow the more dense development, then you're not going to have the amenities in the development that you want to see there to start with. So you've got, you know, if you want to see tennis courts or pickleball courts, or you want to see a pool or whatever, you can't go with so dense in order to have amenities that this community is going to want, and if they don't have them in the community, they're going to come to the, this board and, and try to get them. So I think that, you know, you can't go but so dense anywhere and get what you want to have, like Ms. Gugino was talking about earlier.
Other questions, comments? Is this something we should ask Mr. Cooley to put some more information on and come back to us?
So I think we need to be more specific to make his job easier.
I, I, I agree.
Well, I think the first one would be, I, I would be interested in the answer to your topic, is the fact of, okay, you have a R3, and you can go 75% of that R3 density upfront, but if you want to go to the 100% density that's allowed in R3, you need to purchase the development rights to get you there. I'd like to know whether or not that's something that's obtainable for us, at least have that conversation.
Mr. Cooley, what do you feel, what, what direction would you be looking for to put something together?
I think what Supervisor Gugino just said is something we can look at. I mean, I think that was a very specific question we can look at. I think we can also look at the, you know, percentage. Again, this is going to be, if, if the state code specifically allow it, or does, is there, is there language within state code that we can interpret that these types of programs we're looking at would, would fit in state code? It's, at the end of the day, that's what it gets down to, is if we are enabled by the General Assembly to do these types of things.
I think maybe we need to be careful here. Just, I, I would encourage caution, meaning I'm, I'm all for being creative. I also think that we need to be conservative in our interpretation, unless, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing, the only other thought that I'll bring to the table on this issue, and we can hopefully maybe move on, but if you're ready to. But we do have quite a bit of zoning already in place in our growth areas that we just talked about, and unless there's an appetite to lower that potential first, and then allow the sending areas to put rights back in there, I'm not sure that we have a lot of areas that would be primed, in my opinion, for receiving areas, but that's just, that's just my opinion, so. We, we have to be careful, because we have a lot of zoning in place, and it's, it's not been realized yet, and they have an expectation under their current zoning, you know, of a certain number of rights. So some of those could be increased, and if the infrastructure's there, like we talked about, but just wanted to throw that out.
Other, other comments? Mr. Rosenberg?
Just the fact that most of the discussion we've had up to this point in time lends itself to inadequate public facilities ordinance, which the General Assembly will not give you. We've tried for years and years in order to get that, and it makes more sense than anything in the world, because you shouldn't put it where you don't have infrastructure. But ultimately, if you're going But ultimately, if you're going to be looking at the possibility of having these receiving areas to be in, they would be in your growth areas. They would have to be, you know, around your town where the services are there, where you've got quick police and fire response and that sort of thing. So as you're looking at this, if the board moves in that direction, then you got to make sure that the, we're going to have adequate roads in order to handle the increase before you ever think about going there. So, you know, it'd be limited as to where you could go with it from the very get-go, because I don't think that, given the state of our budget and everything else, that you want to go out and be building roads for future development right now. And, and, you know, roads is something that we would hope that the developers would be building, which you can do through proffers as we move forward.
So, I have one more thing, if I may. So an idea in, in not necessarily moving a density from the rural area to our growth areas, but we have incentives within a lot of our different zonings saying like, oh, well, if you build a tot lot, you can reduce your open space. What if you can reduce your open space if you purchase development rights in our rural areas? Like another mechanism to do that, instead of putting that money towards an amenity that may not be applicable to that type of development, that, that would be another option for them to get incentivized for the best utilization of the land that they have for themselves?
I would think we've got to search for how we tie the, the purchase of development rights to make it a necessity. If you're going to, you're going to want to have these if you're going to develop. How you do that, I'm not exactly sure, but we need to be looking at that. And that's, that's kind of the challenge for you to come back to us at our next session.
Any, anything else on TDRs?
Just real quick, I, in theory, I like the thought at first blush about, okay, not a tot lot, but purchasing development right, until I think, okay, if I'm moving into that neighborhood, then that neighborhood is paying for development rights so far away, it's an area they never even go, and not getting a tot lot because there isn't a lot being built in Boston. So I don't know. I think when we get into that, that may not be optimal. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure at all, but...
Happy to have anybody's stuff.
Okay, let's move on. Item C, PDRs, purchase of development rights. Sorry. I'm just going to leave it on, I guess. Apologize about that. The county does currently have a conservation easement program ordinance. Unfortunately, it's just not funded at this time. Purchase, I mean, this, this is really like the, this is the purchase of development rights. This is where, you know, local governments can go out and target, we could target Salubria. And if they needed some money, we could work on a program to buy the development rights for the Salubria property. It's never going to be developed. I just thought that was, that's the first property that popped into my head. That would also provide the organization or the people taking care of the, you know, historical property or whatever property we were looking at, funds to maintain it, to improve it. And so, I mean, it, I think it's a good program. I think the hardest part is going to be coming up with the requirements for who is, you know, who the county would, you know, target in, in cases like that. Or, or who we could work with in, you know, outside of the government. You know, can we somehow work with developers to, as part of their civic-mindedness, you know, buy, hey, can you, you know, we need you to buy two development, we would like for you to think about, excuse me, buying two development rights from this organization, you know, as part of your civic-mindedness during, during this process. Again, I sometimes feel I, sometimes feels like a little bit of arm twisting, but if we can work with them and, and work with the attorney to make the language correct, I think it, it could help some developers to, you know, get a little bit of goodwill in the, in the, in the county. Whether we need that or not, I don't know, but. Or it could be used for locals in the, in the, in the county who wanted to, who were civic-minded and wanted to help protect different organizations. So I, I think there's a lot that we could do there. And, I mean, the same with the county. If the county, you know, hang on. Anyway, it's, it's, again, it is a many-leveled program. And, and I'm, I'm going in circles here, but it's, 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 it's hard to... I'm trying to decide which way you guys want me to go, and I'm just not sure. So it's, it's a good program. We just have to figure out how we want to proceed with it.
Questions or comments from the board? Ms. Gugino?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Mr. Deal, go ahead.
I'll just say from me personally that I'm all in favor of supporting the, the land bank with the county, acting as basically an intermediary to mitigate as far as, uh, development rights. And to act as a bank, I think it's a great idea. But when it comes to taxpayer money, funding development rights, and using taxpayer money to pay another landowner as far as those development rights, then I'm not, I'm not going to support that. That's just me personally.
Ms. Gugino?
I do have a question. I believe one of the data center applications upon their rezoning had offered up funding for this program. Was there one that did that? Maybe Seattle?
It rings a bell, but I'm not sure.
I have been, and I, I can't recall right at the moment.
I thought it was Seattle that had offered money.
It was certainly discussed.
Yeah, I don't know if it ended up in it, but...
Document. I would have to go back and double check. But, Mr. Chairman, that, that kind of Supervisor Gugino alludes to the point that really is the main question, you know, is, is there a desire to move forward with this program at all? We have a, the bones of it in place, but there's no money to support it, right? So that's, that's, that's the, that's the question. Is there, you know, is there a desire to, to fund the program at any level, whether it's, you know, through taxpayer or rezoning efforts, or proffers, or donations, you know, whatever, whatever the effort is. But, I mean, you have to have money to have this program.
I mean, as far as, I mean, in the case of the data centers, every single one of them went on agricultural property. So it would make a logical stance to the fact that they would contribute to preserving agricultural land elsewhere in the county. Same thing when people take their land out of land use. They're required five years back taxes. That's another place, since they are removing agricultural production from a piece of property that could be utilized without directly impacting any type of tax rate, any type of property rates. All of that stays flat while still being able to put something into this program, as well as there are plenty of state grants, there are plenty of private grants, there are plenty of federal grants available to match any type of money that is applied for that we would have. So ultimately, you would be looking at a very small contribution from the county to actually have big effects in the area in keeping Culpeper rural and keeping these large pieces of land and keeping the areas from being overdeveloped, which is basically what a lot of constituents are saying and what our comprehensive plan lays out for us.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a quick question. I, I read in one of our documents that if, if we have a local source of money for purchase of development rights, that the state of Virginia will match that? Is that correct?
There is, there is a fund that you can apply for, for matching.
Okay.
And we've had interest in this program before from, from outside, outside partners, and, and we've never moved on that.
Right. But I agree with my colleague Supervisor Gugino that I, I do think that we could find other incentives to help us accomplish this goal. And also, if we have a state of Virginia match, then that's, that's just more, you know, the more the merrier, so.
This is a specific ordinance. I believe it went through rules and came before us in October of '23. If it needs more work, how about we send it back to rules?
The ordinance has been on the books, Mr. Chairman, for a long, long time. And it was resurfaced and tweaked. And it came at the point in time when we started seeing all the applications for all of the data centers because of all this great big pile of money that we're going to get. And that would be a good use for it, you know, to be able to offset. And Ms. Gugino's hit some very good points on that. But we've had one in place for a long time.
I'm, I'm not so sure that the, the ordinance needs work as much as we need to identify funding sources and how we would fund this program if we were to move forward with it. So would it make sense if we asked staff to come back to us next time with a, a couple of ideas about how we could fund it, what that would look like, potential money that could be raised?
I'd say as long as taxpayer funds isn't one of them. I agree with Supervisor Deal on that one.
I'm not saying where, but I don't know that we want to put that in our budget right now.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gugino did rattle off quite a few actual funding sources that we could look into. Some of them do involve, you know, she mentioned rollback taxes. I mean, that obviously comes to the county, but that's a property that's come out of land use and paid a five-year rollback tax. There are jurisdictions that use that to fund this type of program. And in my opinion, one opinion, that's not a bad use if the board wanted to do that. I don't know what revenues look like year to year on that, but we certainly could get the board an estimate on that.
I, I think if we could look at an estimate of what kind of revenue we thought we might be able to raise, that would give us an idea of what sort of impact this program would have.
Okay, anything else on PDRs? We'll move on to D, new preservation zone district information.
Mr. Chairman, this is not something that, well, let me put to you this. I'm going to request that Supervisor Underwood help us out on this one. I'd like you to explain your, what's your, your proposal.
And I had explained this before, so if we can cut to the chase and get to the next stuff, I'm happy to do that, too. But what I was saying was that if there are large areas that are primarily agricultural in nature that have shown a desire to participate in programs, for us to come up with even more tools for them to make, to create incentives, positive incentives, to reduce potential density in those areas, we may have greater success with a carrot than a stick, was the way I was looking at it. So if, and specifically, if you look at the eastern part of the county where our, the most of our ag-forested districts are, there may be a good nexus of property there that could find it worthwhile if there were true incentives. Now, what could the incentives be? If they don't want data centers and they don't want solar, you could say, hey, no solar, no data centers in this new zone. If they need a preference for agricultural equipment on the road, to the extent allowed to state law do that, or even to design the roads or whatever, to know that that's going to be a need in the future. To have money to say that we're going to first take the money from this area for PDRs. If we do this program, say, hey, you're at the top of the list if you join this area. So there you got real money incentives. You, you got a bunch of incentives that could make it worthwhile for a group that could be a lot of acres, save 50, 100,000 to say, hey, we may want to go to preservation zoning where the minimum is 20 or 25 acres. And if we did that now, we could have a huge impact on a significant portion of this county. That, that was the initial thought behind it.
Mr. Bates?
Mr. Chairman, if we can just kind of backtrack and you tie in PDR to this overlay, and to Supervisor Deal's comment about taxpayer money funding PDRs. So the next topic we're going to look at is cost of services information. So for every dollar that we take in, in tax revenue, it's costing our constituents, our taxpayers, $1.22. So in a sense, if we were to take these data centers and we were to say, okay, and I don't know how much money we're going to get and when we're going to get it, but if, as this thing progresses and we find out how much we need to have in this pot to, to buy these, these development rights, if we took a percentage, if we said, okay, 1% or 2% or whatever of the tax revenue collected from these data centers, you're actually saving taxpayer money because you're not having to make up that other 22 cents to provide the services that are required for residential housing. And that's just maybe...
I'll buy that, so it's the idea that, well, no, seriously, but I want to see the money first. So there have been people here who've said, let's wait till we get it. But if we're sitting here with $100 million a year, wondering if we should take 1% or 2% to buy development rights, I very much look forward to that conversation. I'm not saying no to that.
And I think you can base it off of the fact that it's costing us 22 cents for every dollar we spend.
And I think the 22 is conservative. If you told me 40, I would not disagree with you.
And, and that is the underlying reason we are having all of these conversations, because we need to do something to address these issues. Other thoughts on Supervisor Underwood's proposal? Thoughts, ideas?
I feel that we go hand in hand with what we're talking about when, that putting these areas at top of the list. I mean, I, I like that.
One, one of the things that's already in place, the, the PDR ordinance that we have has a mechanism to rate the, the land based on the agricultural value and, and other aspects about that. So that's already there. But I, I think this may fit into the whole package that we could be putting together here.
Joining counties that do have, like, there's Madison County's conservation joint zoning. So if, if we could create an area where there's buy-in from the people in it and there are tangible benefits, I think this could get us to where we're trying to go to some degree. Maybe not everything everyone wants, but it could help.
Every little piece of this is going to help. Mr. Rosenberg?
Just to mention the fact that any land that's out there right now that the people have put, the owners have put into an agricultural and a forested district, you can't cut a lot that's less than 40 or 45 acres within that, within that agricultural and forested district if you're in it. You have a minimum lot size, is it 40 or 45?
50, 50 acres, actually.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, good enough. Just to mention that, the ones that are in there can't do any more than that right now, anyway.
Well, but they could withdraw, or it's only good for eight years. So what I'm trying to do is add some permanence to it.
Yeah.
And, 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 Mr. Chairman, I, you know, just my opinion real quick, I, I agree that this is a tool. It's a, it's a viable tool. Zoning is one of your primary tools in general when we're talking about this discussion. So I think it's certainly worth looking at. You know, and one of the things that Supervisor Underwood alluded to, and I keep looking to the Stevensburg District Representative, because a lot of those landowners are going to fall in that district. You know, the large majority of landowners need to desire such a zoning designation. So as we go through that process, they're probably going to tell us whether they, you know, they agree with this or not. But I do think it's worth looking into, so.
Yeah, I definitely agree. I don't think that we should discourage any tool at this point.
And a quick question for Supervisor Underwood. If you're in the preservation district, does that preclude you from participating in TDR and PDR and things of that nature?
That's up to us, but what I would say is we want to make this district as attractive as possible. So it should put you at the front of the line. It should preclude you from being a receiving area, but it should not, you should be in front of the line.
Eliminate you from being a sending area, right.
Yeah, so what we want to do is create the incentives for, to preserve the rural character and to have the landowner appreciate it. That's the whole goal.
Gotcha. All right. I support that. Thank you. Good. And, Mr. Underwood, you could actually make them a, you know, preferred TDR seller, so they would get, they would get the first cut at the, at whoever comes in to purchase a TDR.
Even for the PDR, it'd be a minor change to the ordinance that was done in '23. Already got the tool in place.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could, one more comment about all of these tools and anything that's dealing with the division... and anything that's dealing with the divisions and different things is we've got to keep in mind of whether or not we need to identify the impact to the family divides, how that affects the family divides, whether family divides are going to be exempt, or how that's going to work in there, because we do have that kind of one-off of all of these type of different programs on whether or not that is still going to be available to these certain areas or within these programs or not. Right, I don't want to mistakenly jeopardize it by implementing any of these, just to keep it in our mind that we need to make that accommodation.
Okay. Any further work we need to do on Mr. Underwood's proposal here? Have it as a tool chest to look at in the future?
Looking at it, stop calling it mine and let's put it as part of the... It's going to help, but I guess, sure.
Let's move on to item E, cost of services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county back in 2003 worked with the American Farmland Trust to do one of these studies, which has been referenced earlier. The study did find that both the commercial and industrial paid more taxes than they took in services and that residential actually cost more in services than they paid in taxes. I mean, that was a big thing to come out of that. So this was a study from 2003. What I have been able to do is I actually talked to some people at the American Farmland Trust. And they went back and dug through their files and have provided me the Excel file they used to make this determination. We could actually... so we know what information we need. We could actually update it in-house. It might take a little bit of time collecting the data again if we wanted to do that. The other thing that the Farmland Trust people told me is that Weldon Cooper is now doing these types of studies. So if the cost of services, you know, information is something that the board thinks would be good to update, we have... we could work on one in-house. My preference would be to go with Weldon Cooper, as they're the professionals and a little busy downstairs with various things. But it's, you know, that's... I'm kind of looking to the board, obviously, for a lot of direction here.
Thoughts, correction? Let's see, I think Weldon Cooper did one for us. I'm trying to... maybe they didn't, but I remember Weldon Cooper and data from like 2009 or '10. So 15, 16 years ago, there was a lot of information, and it was. It was specifically Dave Maddox talked a lot about it and Frank a little bit, and it got into student ratios and costs. So maybe checking our files, but they were the ones that... I remember their name a lot relative to this.
I have a recollection that the school system may have engaged them for that type of study. Because I think we may have heard some of that, Mr. Bates, when we were on the Joint Capital Planning Committee.
I remember vaguely, I'm sorry, but I think we need a more updated number, because when we start talking about expenditure of taxpayer money, I think we need to have a clear picture of, you know, where we are, what's coming in, what's going out.
Mr. Rosenberg, did you have... just deal?
I'll piggyback on that. We need... we're, just for public knowledge, we're talking about using taxpayer money to pay for development rights for someone that owns a piece of property, lives on that property, and we're going to pay them a lump sum of money for developmental rights so it can't be developed, just for clarity, so the public will know that. We're talking about taxpayer money, hard-earned money by our taxpayers, that we're going to pay another entity that owns a piece of property a lump sum amount of money to stay there and live there.
I believe what we're looking at is exploring possibility...
I just want to make sure I understand what we're talking about here.
Let me explain that, the way I see it. We are exploring possibilities of how we would fund purchase of development rights, which is already an ordinance within the county. And taxpayer dollars may or may not be part of that, but there are, as was brought up here today by Ms. Cogino, there are many different sources of funds for that kind of a project, and...
It appears to me there's a majority of the board that's leaning that way. So I'm assuming that we're going to go, if you're tasking Mr. Cooley to come up with certain criteria to meet that standard, then it looks like to me the board is headed that way, as a majority.
I don't believe we're tasking with criteria to meet a PDR. Did we do that? That was not the...
I know, I know we're collaborating right now, but...
The direction on the PDR was to look at potential funding opportunities and give an estimate of what they could be and what the impact of that could be if they were used.
Okay.
And that...
And matching dollars means you're still having to match whatever that allotment is in taxpayer money. Right, okay. Well, I thought that Mr. Bates said earlier that, you know, when the data center complex revenue starts coming in, that he would support taxpayer use of money to go toward development rights.
To be clear, what I said was for residential development. For every dollar that we take in, according to a 2003 study, that taxpayers are having to pay $1.22 out of their pocket to provide services for these houses, that it may be worth looking at that, yes, we take a percentage of data center money if it would offset that 22 cents where it's not so much of a burden because we're not having these houses being built. Does that make sense?
Not to me it doesn't. To me, it doesn't make sense because you're still taking taxpayer money that would go into the coffers, would go into the general fund, would go into some appropriate portfolio or account.
Could we have... Hang on just a second. Let me see if I can pull this back together here. We're not making any decisions today on how we're going to fund anything. We are looking at some different options. And right now, the question that's on the table is about whether or not we want to move forward with a study to come up with current cost of services. So what does it cost us to provide the services that we do from a tax perspective? Let's tackle that one first. Any other thoughts or ideas there? Do we need to do this? We need to move forward with Weldon Cooper?
I mean, my opinion is, is you don't know how to plan for the future if you don't know what things cost you today. So without us knowing our true baseline of today, we can't do any type of projections based on our current growth, based on the demographics of what type of growth we have, whether it's commercial, industrial, or residential. So I think we do need to have more up-to-date numbers, understanding what those impacts are as we see high-density developments come in that are by right today, that were zoned decades ago, or are minor division that is going on like crazy everywhere else in the county. So I would think that information is power.
Other thoughts on engaging Weldon Cooper?
I think Weldon Cooper, relative to the discussion earlier, had to deal with more like population figures relative to the census. But if they do that sort of thing, it wouldn't hurt to talk to them. But I believe if census related, what they do.
So would it make sense to ask Mr. Cooley or staff to contact Weldon Cooper, get a proposal as to what it would be to perform the study and come back to us? And we'd know what that would cost and we can make a decision? If they'd even do it.
I actually have a phone call at 11 o'clock with Weldon Cooper on Monday.
Perfect. Okay. Let's move on to item F, which is a build-out analysis.
You want to take this?
Mr. Chairman, there's a letter E or a letter F there. We're on the last one there on the agenda. The draft build-out analysis information, there are several different things that were posted and those are outlined, too, on board docs. There's five different things that we put together that we thought were worthwhile looking into as far as data, background information, if you will. First one is vacant parcels. That indicates an estimate of the number of vacant parcels that we have. A little less than 4,000 today. The second thing you see there is new construction over the past five years by district. New residential construction, that is, that over the past five years broken down by magisterial district. The third document that you see are the various residential projects that are approved, either in a past life several boards ago, recently, or that are under review. You know, in a nutshell, that report shares that there are approximately 3,392 lots available through approved rezonings or current subdivisions that are under review. The fourth thing that you see there are acreage and parcel breakdowns of the zoning districts that still... that allow residential uses. And then the fifth item that you see there is a draft build-out analysis. And I want to emphasize the word draft because there's a lot of assumptions that have been made with our methodology to get this. If you're, like a lot of people, and you look at that last number, that last number is an estimate. I just want to be clear on that, that 20,000-plus number. But we do have the ability to explain that methodology. Pam Schermeier in the GIS office has done a good job of putting together some information that we can use as a baseline if the board wants to do that. But that's an estimate given per zoning district, your A1, RA, your R districts, your CS district, which still allows residential zoning or residential uses as well. So that is a quick summary of what you have before you. I'm happy to dive down into the weeds if we need to on any of those documents, so. And Pam is ready, too, she can help me. And John can help figure out many questions on that, so.
Ms. Cogino?
So the breakout of the projects per magisterial district. I know that we only have control over the ones that you've displayed, but we have impacts from all of them. So I would also like to see the town numbers, too, because those impact our schools, those impact our fire and rescue, those ultimately impact our roads because they've got to get to town somehow. So I don't think we can ignore them.
No, and Supervisor Cogino, we're definitely not ignoring the town. You're right, there's a lot of active developments inside town limits and we see them each and every day, but we don't have any tallies or information at this point. We could probably ascertain that, we just have not done that yet, so.
I agree, it'd be good to ascertain that. So one, there's... we could easily get the historic building permit, so that's easy. We don't have to even do anything for that. But then for the future, to the extent that town could help us with that, that'd be great.
And these, in the district, they include all zoning designations, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because it would also be nice to see the breakout based on whether or not they're major divisions or minor divisions. I know we have the lots that are there, but we don't have the actual buildings.
And we have used that, as you know, in past discussions. We did not put that up there, probably should have today, but we do have a... we keep a tally of that, so we know exactly where we are through probably last month, Pam, minor divisions versus major divisions.
Now, as far as the actual construction on those, whether they are which zoning designation these numbers fell into?
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
So for the old question that we asked of what's the total potential density in A1 and RA, 10,064 seems to be the answer. We got the answer.
We do. And we have a number that says it's 20,495 across the county.
That's right, so when you include all the rezonings, R1, R2, but the... yeah, so everywhere, the facts are the facts. Everywhere the number is 20,495, of which 10,064 are in the 90% of the county's owned A1, RA.
Other questions, comments about this report? No?
Thank you, it's awesome. I mean, it's good information and staff did an awesome job, so I'll say that. A lot of work done in a short period of time, and I'm grateful to have the information. Overall, staff did very well for this, in my opinion.
And any other comments here?
It's an overwhelming number of total lots, units, houses available.
I believe as we look at our agenda today, we get down to the end and we look at cost of services and we look at the potential houses that could be built in the county as things are today. And it is a definite call to action that we need to... it reinforces that we need to be here today doing what we're doing and looking at how to manage this growth, because it's coming at us and we need to understand it. This is a great help in being able to do that and to see these numbers. Supervisor Underwood?
I disagree with the call to action. To me, when I look at it and you tell me there are 10,064 potential lots ever in 90% of the county, that means at 2.1 per household, you're saying the total growth would be 21,000 people? If that's all we're going to have in the next 50-plus years, we're going to be below every target listed in our comp plan and everywhere else. I see it as a call to action that, shoot, should we go do more rezonings? I don't want to, but that's very few lots over a very, very long time. So I see it as a call to do nothing.
But then in that other 10% of the county, you have the exact same number.
Now, looking at future growth areas and do we... should we be very cognizant of rezonings and our infrastructure 100%? I view that as important.
And the infrastructure comes into play as you look at R1 and RA also, or A1 and RA. It's a major part there. Any other things we need to discuss here today? Let me sort of sum up what I think we have asked for here today. For item 3.1, Supervisor Cogino is going to work with staff to redefine some of the variables that are in the growth areas and look at them and look at some ways so we can understand just what is happening there. And do that with the intent of passing that on to the Planning Commission for their review. Transfer development program. For the next session, we're going to need some ideas of how that could be implemented here, what it would look like. If we could have some success or failure stories from Frederick County or from some of the other places where that has happened, that would be good. But that's an item we need to dig into much deeper at the next session. Next item, item C, the PDRs. Looking at exploring funding options. That is not limited to anything and that is not directing funding from any one particular place, but what type of money is available and what type of impact we think that could have in this area. We're going to call item D now the PZD program, since Supervisor Underwood does not want his name on it. It is the Preservation Zoning District. I think that is a... there's some good options there that we should look... There's some good options there that we should look at and see how that... They could fit into other pieces here. Contact Weldon Cooper, American Farmland Trust, see what the options are to get current costs, and I believe that's where we are. Anything else we need to be looking at?
Oh, getting the town numbers for the build-outs.
Town numbers for the build-out, yes.
I will say that, you know, depending upon Mr. Cooley's conversation with Weldon Cooper or with the American Farm Trust, you know, this may be something we have to go through procurement if we're going to hire a consultant, you know, depending on what it is. Now, consultants sometimes fall outside of the procurement process because they're considered experts in their fields, and that can go outside of that. But just get with us when... After you've talked to them, and we can talk that through with you and I and Alan Kulpever.
Okay.
Thank you. If there is nothing else, is there a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into closed meeting as permitted under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A67 and 29 to discuss and consider the potential award of a public contract involving the expenditure and/or the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made publicly initially, the financial interest of the board county would be adversely affected.
Is there a second? All those in paper say aye?
Aye.